Ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, we call this emergency preparedness briefing to order. Let the city clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hirschberg?
Present.
Commissioner Honaker?
Here and drawing.
Commissioner Sliker?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Sukup?
Here.
Vice Mayor Knobick?
Here.
Mayor Mousard?
Here. Do our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the reason I called the meeting is because we all need either a refresher or an update on exactly what steps we follow, procedures we follow, and the chain of command during this horrific time that we may be facing. So, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Jane and let her have staff, they provided us with some information, let her work staff through this so we can get as much information we need to get out of here at a reasonable time tonight. Thank you. Jane?
Mayor, if I may, you have before you a packet. I will ask Chief Sedgler to kind of give you an overview in regards to the weather conditions and what we plan for activation of the Emergency Operations Center. Then what I'm going to do is turn the podium over to the Assistant Legal Counsel in regards to, for your consideration, an emergency resolution for a declaration of a state of local emergency related to Hurricane Matthew. And then I'll provide an update in regards to city facilities and trash operations.
Chief?
Good evening. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I know here lately with the weather. And then I'm actually going to turn it over to Chief Seaver to kind of give you an update on the EOC operations and stuff, so...
Okay, respectfully, commissioners, we are on the air live tonight, just so you know. So this is going to be able to be re-tellcast. Thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
In your packet, you have the latest National Weather Service track. The track actually takes the storm now for the first time actually touching land, impacting right at Daytona Beach. This is category three or four type hurricane as it hits that area. And that's the current track. I just want to emphasize that's the current track. Two days ago, the current track had us 300 miles offshore and no problem at all. And now, two days later, I think it is, we actually have the eye of the storm hitting land. So, the hurricane-force winds are stretching out from the storm about 45 miles. And tropical storm-force winds are extending out 175 miles. So this is an absolutely monster of a storm. Probably nothing like we've faced here even going through the '04 storms in the past. We had some stuff come through, but nothing to this level. The, we've also got some latest indications that they're now starting to evacuate the barrier islands. And those evacuations generally come this way. So, I haven't heard anything as far as, I haven't heard anything as far as opening of shelters yet. But we're trying to get that information as we speak. And Chief Seaver will talk a little bit about, there's a packet in here that shows the actual shelters here in Deltona. If you're interested, it also talks about the special needs shelters, which ones are special needs, which ones are pet-friendly, that type of stuff. But it does not tell you which ones are open yet because we just don't know that yet. At the four o'clock, or I'm sorry, the two o'clock briefing with the county, they had told us that they actually weren't going to do any evacuations or shelter openings until 8:00 a.m. And obviously, that's changed over the last few hours, so I would assume that the shelters have changed as well. As you can see, the storm right now looks like the eye is going to be right next to us at 2:00 p.m. on Friday. However, again, can't emphasize enough, this is changing by the minute, you know? It was not too long ago, it was 2:00 a.m., now it's all the way at 2:00 p.m., which means that the storm has slowed quite a bit, which is going to give it an opportunity to strengthen and grow as it comes through because there's really not a whole lot in its way between where it's at and where we are right now. So, and I think that's pretty much it as far as the storm goes. So, turn it over to Chief Seaver to finish out with the rest of the information that's in your packet.
Do you have an estimated time that we'll start feeling an impact here?
We should start feeling the outer bands as early as Thursday afternoon. And it talks about hitting the first hurricane winds, hitting the first hurricane watch areas, which I'm not sure exactly what they are, but they're, it's down by Broward. And I'm not sure if they've extended that yet, as early as Thursday night. And those will be, we'll feel those effects all the way through Friday.
So tomorrow around 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon, we should start seeing an increase?
We should start seeing some increase, yes.
Okay.
Again, if it doesn't slow down even more, or if it picks up, it may be even a little sooner.
All right, thank you. Chief Seaver?
What I'd like to do is just address a lot of your questions that you wrote in your email, okay? Does everyone have a copy of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, or at least access to it on your iPads or...
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, a lot of the information that I'm going to address is directly inside that document. One of your first questions was the chain of command. Who is in charge? If you choose to enact that disaster declaration tonight, you put into effect your Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And in doing so, makes the fire chief the incident commander for Hurricane Matthew's incident operations. That's the way the plan is set up. We're basically operating underneath NIMS. So the fire chief becomes the incident commander for this entire event. Talking too loud? Okay. Your next question was, is then who would we direct customer calls to for assistance? We put in your packet a whole bunch of information, how you can help us get that information out, who we're going to basically tell the citizens to call, citizen information calls, citizen hotlines. The 878-8100 line was basically going to have a call center which is set up right here in the EOC. And that's going to be a wealth of information for everybody to call. A lot of the different departments are going to call those lines and they'll have all the information that they need or where they can direct the citizens and everybody else to get the information or get redirected to. There's also an 866 number through the Citizen Information Center for Volusia County. That information is also being relayed. There's also a contact information right here that will help you share that information. Public work reports, Deltona Water, Volusia County, general information. All these numbers are just general information that you can help share that. And again, we hope this information you find useful. The duties of each commissioner. Again, this is quite clear in the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, but it's a very good question. There's a lot of information about a 70-page document, a lot of people don't read the details in it. And again, having the storm helped all of us read a little bit more details. But each commissioner is basically outlined as a community liaison. And then you asked exactly, what is a community liaison? Best way to describe that is a community liaison would ensure the exchange of current and accurate information with community members, city, state legislator representatives, city congressional representatives, and visiting dignitaries. It basically assists the designated community liaison with this information. So that's the position that you serve with the city. You don't necessarily get into day-to-day operations. That's the role of the Emergency Operations Manager. You still function as a city manager for a government, that doesn't change. Ms. Shang is in charge of the city. That doesn't affect anything. But the fire chief is the Emergency Operations Manager for this activity. The method we will use to keep the commissioners abreast of the current conditions in the event is happening, we're going to try to keep you as informed as we possibly can. There's going to be periodic briefings through the television. Ms. Shang, you want to address that, how you wanted to specifically handle that?
What I intend to do is provide rigor briefings through emails, texts to you. I don't know whether it will be orally, I think it will be dependent on the conditions that we incur. But you will be getting information, information to the public. I'm asking that it only be disseminated through our public information officers so that we have one point of contact and that information is accurate before we disseminate that information. And also, we want to make sure that it's consistent.
Now, one of the last things that you had mentioned is some of the do's and the don'ts over the next few days. I guess some of the do's is we want you to stay involved. We want you to relay information that you might hear from the residents that you represent. That's going to help us a lot. So if you hear things, if you know of things that need to be done, let us know. You have the information to share that. You have the contacts here. Some of the don'ts is don't overcommit the city. Don't commit to resources that you shouldn't do. That is simply the operations manager to make those commitments for the city. Don't try to, and I don't mean to be harsh, but don't try to run the scene through the back door. That is our role to do that stuff. So again, we want you to be involved. We want you to be informed. We need you to be informed. What your role is, is you are policy writers. You give us these boundaries to operate under, and that Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is very detailed. And if we need to work on those boundaries, we will contact you and ask you to rewrite some of those policies to expand those boundaries. And then that's where we would certainly need you to do that. So, you serve as that policy group for us.
And bottom line, I think we all understand, those numbers that are printed there on that sheet, Nancy, if you want to hold that up, you got it handy, those are the numbers we give out to the public.
That is correct.
No phone calls to department heads, individuals you know, employees, straight through those numbers here on any concerns you have by residents, even if they're your next-door neighbor. Call in, let them handle it through the normal system, okay?
Now, in your Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan that you do have access to is a set of published phone numbers for every one of these positions that you have access to. If, for whatever reason, you need. But again, we would ask that you would clarify that.
It's, that's, that page is for each, that's in here. But I think, unless I'm told otherwise, I think our calls should all be into the manager.
That is correct.
These numbers here, Barbie?
The manager and the incident commander. When her cellphone and operations go down, these lines still working here.
But these are not to go out to anyone, these numbers. They're kept at this station. So these are not something I'll take home and use or whatever else. These are, you know, our natural order of things is we would make a phone call. If it's something to do with finance, we'd call the finance director. We can't tie these phones up. These phones have to be, they have to be available for the emergency. We're only talking 24-hour periods, so...
Okay, so, let's make sure we are all correct. That if, let's say a resident calls us and said, hey, I've got this happening. We should not be calling you or anybody else, we should call directly to...
Those numbers right there.
Directly to Jane.
I'm sorry, why do we have an incident commander? If we're to hold, and then she's busy doing city management duties.
Where are we going to?
We have an incident commander, that's their job.
That's the chief.
And that's who should be getting this information. This is an incident.
So we need to call this number instead, rather than Jane.
That's what...
That's what we need to be clear. Call this number, not Jane.
These are, these are the numbers that you would share these information?
Those are the numbers that we're to use, and the numbers, the only numbers we give out to the public.
But what is the incident commander's number? Because that sheet of paper, I don't have.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have access, just to read it, to review it, to the comprehensive?
Yes, you do have access to that.
All right, Jane, okay. Those are the numbers that go to the public. If you have an emergency that you personally have, you've got Jane's phone number. But if you're, we're talking about the public now, what we could do with the public. Those are the numbers we give the public to call.
That is correct.
If you individually have an issue, call Jane or call Chief. I mean, they're here. But don't forget, they're going to be, having been through here and sat here all day and night, those guys, those phones will be ringing off the hook, going crazy. They don't have time for an incident, tell the people to call if they say they got ahold of you. Tell them to get ahold of that general information, they'll get it to the right desk and get it done. Does everybody agree with that or not, or what? I mean, let's...
Mayor? I just want to clarify one thing for you. If a citizen calls you that they're having an emergency, they need to call 911.
That's right.
Okay, don't, don't give them, don't give them this number if they're having a in-progress emergency. That's still 911. Yes.
Ma'am, may I just ask a quick question?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
It's just you keep referring to the emergency, I'm sorry, I have it on. You keep referring to that, just to review it, not to call anyone, not to do anything out of, but just to review it. You said it's available, is it online somewhere?
The Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, if you go to city departments, fire department, under emergency management, the plan is there. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and the numbers, these numbers you're talking about?
No, the plan.
The plan.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's about as much fun as toothache, but anyway.
Mayor, and if I can just reiterate, it's really important that you utilize these numbers. The reason is, is that we need to have a central collection point and so that the Emergency Operations Center staff, they can kind of get an idea of what is happening in the community. What are some of the issues? Because the calls that we get, we're going to be tracking them as well. And so we need to really understand what is really, as I said, is happening. And if we get these calls that are going here, there, and there, you decentralize the whole process. And then we may not have accurate information for us to then react appropriately.
Yeah, and I guess, just to add, I know Chris has been through it in the room with me in 2004. One of the worst things that happened back then, and it wasn't, in 2004, remember, everybody didn't have a cellphone like they do today. And everybody didn't have Heidi Hirschberg's name, Mitch Honaker's name plugged in there because they know us, they think we're family. And they will be calling you. And we have to only use those numbers because if we start giving out those numbers, we're tying them up when they could, they could be trying to coordinate something with the county. So, it's not meant to dilute your ability to help your customers, but it's meant to try to follow a pattern where we all, and I live by the same rules you do. I'll call in if I'm not here. And while we're on that, if I'm not here, there should be somebody from the commission. And I hope you all will agree that if I can't be here, Vice Mayor will be here. So one of us is here all the time. And we will get information to you guys individually if something happens that, you know, we'll make sure that that gets out to you, okay? Nobody's got a problem with that? All right.
Just real quick, I just wanted to just wrap this up. The general information sheet about the hurricane or the emergency management update, if you just want to read that, I don't want to read it to you, that information is there. There's also some, some just handy information about the shelters and each one of those location. Again, that's on that same website information about the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. It's just below that. It lists all the shelters that are in Deltona. It basically mentions those that are special needs shelters. It also mentions those that are pet-friendly shelters. So again, that information is readily available. There are 11 shelters that are supposed to be opened up tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. Again, I don't know what those 11 shelters are, but as soon as we have that information, it'll be posted.
Okay, thank you. And on this one sheet that we have, pay particular attention to because you're going to get a lot of these kinds of calls. The police are, of course, Captain Egan is back there. He's incognito tonight, but he's back there. But you see on here, on the second page of this one that talks about city of Deltona, there's a good information on there. One of the big ones is that all the parks, Music and Amphitheaters been canceled. Score class are canceled. And the parks, all the parks in the city are closed through Sunday. So there'll be no activities at any city parks. That means the vet center's going to be closed, every park, every whatever, okay? And that's only for the safety of the residents. Everybody, maybe massive cleanup needs to be done, heavy equipment on the roads. So if anybody asks about any practice or whatever, discourage it as much as you can, okay? All right, go ahead, Steve.
That's pretty much all I have, unless you guys had any questions specifically about the updates or information?
Commissioner, Commissioner Honaker sent out a nice letter with all the shelters and a lot of additional information. That's part of your packet too, so that'll be helpful if you need to. You know, answer whatever questions you can, but if you need more.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, could I ask that we just hold this up so that the public is aware of these telephone numbers? And Chris, if you wouldn't mind repeating these numbers verbally for the public because they may not know how to get access on the website or whatever.
Let's do this. Let's give ladies and gentlemen at home a chance to get a piece of paper and a pencil, if you will. And then we'll give you a minute or two and then we'll read the numbers out loud. Those of you that are ready, the city of Deltona, general information, any questions you have. And again, Vice Mayor said it best, if it's a true emergency, 911. But if it's general information on the city, it's 386-878-8100. If it has to do with Deltona Water, report problems only, but Deltona Water problems. Public Works, Trees Down, things like that, you want to report those problems. And then if it's general, Volusia County, outside of our boundaries or something that the county needs to be aware of, that's 866-345-0345. And I'll repeat them again in a few minutes if you didn't have a pencil or paper handy. Okay, and it'll be, we'll post it in different media things and it'll be online, city's website also. Okay, is that it, Chief?
That's all I got.
I have one question.
Okay, let's get some questions and then I want to get a little update from Captain Egan again.
It's not a question as much as I want to make sure that the public and everybody knows. Water, you see people going and going crazy trying to get water, cases of water. But our water does have a backup generator, should we lose, we should not lose water, correct?
We should not lose water. We have plenty of backup generators. Our water system is very secure and safe, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure people know that you will have water...
That's correct.
During this.
Yeah, during the 2004 hurricanes, we gave out truckloads, semi-truckloads of water, and our system never failed.
That is, that is correct.
So, I mean, it's better to be safe than sorry and have a few. But don't get excited if you don't have water available. You fill up your tub for emergencies, things like that. Captain Egan, if you would, could you share with us a little bit like what some of the problems were going on in the city today having to do with everybody rushing to be prepared and any advice?
I don't think there were a lot of problems. You know, we had people getting gas, filling up. A lot of people getting supplies at the grocery store, so it was busy. We had people getting sandbags and things like that. We didn't have any specific problems or...
No, I just meant there's long lines and stuff.
Yes, sir.
So people have almost a full day tomorrow, at least till 3:00 p.m. to be able to make sure they, they fill up with things and that.
Yes, sir. And the one thing that I would add is if and when an evacuation order or recommendation is given, please heed that warning. Okay? You know, pass it on to the public that, you know, that they just don't make up these suggestions for no reason. You know, I understand people want to stay home, but sometimes it's not safe where they're in.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, there's something going around all over Facebook that Governor Scott passed a law that you can now carry concealed weapon at night for the next 48 hours. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
I'm not aware of any, any law like that.
You could carry a concealed weapon at night?
I mean, without a permit.
Oh, no, I haven't heard that. No.
Okay, that's going around all over that you're allowed to, so?
No, no, that's, I would say unless you hear otherwise, that's not true. I haven't seen anything come in about that.
Yeah.
If you have a concealed weapon permit, you have to follow the guidelines as set by state statutes. There hasn't been no change in that that I've heard of.
Yeah, I would mention our office is closed the next two days down at Providence Boulevard. We do have a bunch of deputies working. We've got double shift scheduled, so, you know, we're definitely preparing. But nobody will specifically be at the office answering the phone. The phones are forwarded to our dispatch center, correct?
Okay, deputies will be all out on the road. There won't be admin staff. And for those that aren't aware, city hall is closed both Thursday and Friday, and the water company except for emergencies, okay? Anybody, Jane? Okay, what I'd like to do then is the resolution, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it. The resolution's pretty much cut and dried. It actually stipulates all the things that we talked about. It gives the power to the city manager to do whatever's necessary in an emergency, which is common sense. It's, I don't want to get Mr. Boss upset there, but it's legally, it's three pages to say Jane can do whatever she deems necessary in an emergency, is basically what it says. And if there's no objections to that...
I do have a question on it.
Yeah, questions are fine. Go ahead, sir.
Number five, because there's usually a resolution declaring an emergency, but this time we put them all in one, and then there's one declaring a city manager having the right to purchase. So we got it all in one, which is great, but under five, it says appropriation and expenditure of public funds. Shouldn't there be a not-to-exceed dollar limit on there? That, anything over that would take...
Absolutely not, sir. The, I mean, you know, that's up to you, but I would say no, you don't have any idea what the cost could be or what the disaster could be. And I don't want to limit, I would not want to place a limit. You know, it's kind of, I don't want to say it's in a tacky manner, but her job depends on her doing the best job she possibly can. And I assume we have confidence in her to do that. She's not going to make some outlandish person. But the purchase would have to have something to do with, you know, with this emergency, you know? So I wouldn't want to limit it. She has a current limit of $25,000. But there are other, there are other things that, under the management plan, allows her to do. This has given her the permission to work under emergency. So I totally support not having any limits on that because we would all have to meet again right in the middle of a disaster to make a change, which we would do if it was necessary. So we have to, this is one of those things where you have to trust your manager to do the right thing.
And I think, truthfully, we already, we're smart enough, we do have a fair amount of money in a emergency fund.
Right.
So we have the funds to get trees cleared, roads cleared, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly. She's got to have the ability to spend that money if we need to bring in emergency people.
I just want to point out, Mayor, that one of the main purposes, and maybe Attorney Bill's will talk about this too. One of the main purposes of doing this document tonight is, like Chief Seaver said, is to enact the emergency powers of the city. And they're all outlined in that document. And probably the most important element about this paper that we're going to be voting on here tonight and you signing that order, is once you've declared the state of emergency for the city, it now allows us to receive reimbursement funds from the county, from the state, from FEMA as we move through. from the state, from, from FEMA as, as we move through this. Having been through this in '04, and, and the amount of storms we had in '04, I can tell you that the, the documentation goes right down to the, to the, to the lowest level, that's not the good way to say that, it goes to, it goes to every position in the city. Anybody who is working this event, people that are filling sandbags, people that are working in the kitchens, keeping the police and fire people fed, keeping the public works people fed, everything that's going to take place, all those hours are tracked, and they are all then compiled by finance, and roll up into a report that goes to the county, which goes to the state, then which goes ultimately to, to FEMA. So, we, we are, we are in the first phase of three phases. This is the preparation phase of all of this. This is laying all the groundwork to get the people informed, to get the equipment in place, to get everything ready, and get our citizens ready. The second phase will be when the storm actually hits, and during that phase, we won't be doing very much. Everybody will be hunkered down, including the emergency services. Is it still 45 miles an hour, Chief?
Yes.
At 45 miles an hour, all emergency fire and EMS vehicles are pulled off the road. They will not be responding to calls until the storm passes. And once we get the okay from, from the county, that we can put vehicles back onto the road, then, then we'll be doing an assessment. We'll go through and do an assessment, and we'll start moving into the search and rescue and recovery phases that will, that will wind this all up. All of those phases will be documented through our emergency management people and roll up to the state. So, this is that very first document that sets all of that in motion, and is extremely important.
Okay. All right, would you like to entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion if you'll let me.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we enact the emergency resolution 2016-52.
Second. I was going to probably move, Vice Mayor, no, because second by Commissioner Schleicher. The emergency resolution reads, it's emergency resolution, City Commission, City Deltona floor, declaring a state of local emergency for Hurricane Matthew. And it'll be, I'll sign it here and pass it on down to our attorney, and the times and dates. I do want to let you know that I did come in about an hour and a half early.
Mayor.
Prior to the meeting, I will. And I did go through and read section 252.38. I know that's dangerous for a mayor to be reading the law books, but I did do it to refresh my memory, because I hadn't read it in a while. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have to ask if there's any public participation?
There's no public here. Okay.
Ask for the sake of the record.
I'll ask for public participation, but because nobody's in the room, obviously I don't guess anybody would say anything. Does anybody want to just say something? No. Will close the public participation?
Rest of it.
And all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Most carries unanimously, if you pass that down to Mr. Voss. Jane, Ken?
I just wanted to, to correct the record. I stand corrected. The governor enacted a bill two years ago allowing citizens to carry concealed weapons while they are in the act of evacuating, and a mandatory evacuation order has been issued. I'm not aware of any mandatory evacuation order, other than the barrier island.
Yeah, it's the barrier island, so it doesn't affect Deltona residents.
No, but, but it does allow, while you're in the act of evacuating, to carry a firearm on your person, okay? Thank you for that information.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
Mayor.
Comment?
Yes.
Could we talk about the waste pickup, please?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, for the public's benefits in our folder, you want to go through it?
Right. I actually have some highlights that I'd like to relay to the public.
Yeah.
Sandbags, they were still available until nine o'clock tonight over at Fire Station 65 at 2983 Holland Boulevard. Sandbags will also be available tomorrow on Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They will be available at the Fire Station 65, 2983 Holland Boulevard, but this will be self-service. Sandbags are available at the Public Works facility at Festival Park, located at 191 Holland Boulevard, next to Walmart. They will also be open from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. tomorrow, okay? All facilities, city hall, again, is closed Thursday and Friday, except for the emergency operations center staff, and also a skeleton staff at the other facility. We have equipment that's located, a front loader and a backhoe, in the event of emergency situations, in regards to clearing the streets, they are, have already been moved, they are located at the fire stations, so that if there is a need, we are prepared, okay? Also want to mention is, again, that all parks events, they are closed, starting tomorrow and going on until Sunday. In regards to trash removal, we will have trash removal tomorrow. We have contacted Waste Pro, they are putting extra equipment, they are having the front loaders as well as the back loaders. They will be picking up trash tomorrow. With the extra equipment, they believe they should be able to finish by around 1:00 p.m. They will cover not only the normal pickup for that day, but I've also asked them to go throughout the city and the other routes and pick up whatever they can. Trash removal has been suspended for Friday. There will be absolutely no trash, bulk waste, yard waste, anything, and then we'll reevaluate the situation. If all goes well and the storm passes, we are thinking that we'll have trash removal on Saturday. But again, I want to reiterate that this is fluid, and that the public, please bear with us, that as the storm approaches and we deal with the situation, things may need to change. Okay. Um, let me see, sandbags. We also encourage that we use this hotline that has been established, the 386-878-8100 number. Staff will be manned starting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. to address any phone calls that come in, because, as I mentioned earlier, city hall will be closed Thursday and Friday. So, I encourage that anyone who has any questions regarding the situation with Hurricane Matthew, to direct those general questions, again, to 386-878-8100. What I'd also like to reiterate again, and I don't know if you want to show it, the other numbers for Deltona Water and Public Works, in the event that there are problems, not for information about the storm, but problems in the event that there's a water issue, or there's a downed tree, or some other situation that needs to be addressed. Deltona Water, again, is 386-575-6800. Public Works, 386-878-8950. Issues related to the county, their general information number is 866-345-0345. And with that, I'll take any other questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions by commission? I only just wanted to make one statement I think is important. Although city hall is going to be closed, I also want to say that if you do come here and see cars and people, this EOC is locked. We don't allow the public in here, no one's allowed in here, except the people that are actively working the case, the scene, the tragedy, the hurricane. So, if you come to city hall and you're refused entry in or speak to anybody, please do not be upset. Call those numbers that the city manager Jeff gave out, 878-8100, 386-878-8100. Or if it's a real emergency, call 911, and it'll, it'll be taken care of. But there will be no one allowed into the EOC as of 8:00 tomorrow morning. The one other thing listed, what was it, was one other thing? I was, I was going to read the numbers, but city manager Shang did that already, so we, we have that. Are there any other questions by commission? Any more information from staff? We're good?
Just another update that we just got from Facebook.
Okay, another update.
The, um.
Get, would you put, get to the mics so everyone can hear you?
The shelters that are going to open up tomorrow here in Deltona will be Heritage Middle School.
Heritage Middle School.
Galaxy Middle School.
Galaxy Middle.
And Pine Ridge High.
And Pine Ridge High School will be open tomorrow at any time.
8:00 for Heritage Middle School, 9:00 for Galaxy Middle and Pine Ridge.
Okay, 8:00 for Heritage, 9:00 for Galaxy and Pine Ridge. Those are emergency shelter locations.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Chief, are any of those special needs, will Galaxy be special needs?
Heritage is a special needs and pet-friendly. Galaxy's special needs and pet-friendly.
Okay.
If you'd like the list of the rest of them, I could just let you know what they are, just for?
We'll have them online, and they're on our sheets, so we'll have them online. Okay, thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, I was just gonna, that's just what I was going to say, those that are special needs and pet-friendly. And just an announcement to those of you that have, that have animals, they're looking for fosters for displaced pets or people that cannot take their pets with them on, on some of the lost pets pages, if anyone's available to foster any of the animals that they're bringing in from outside. And again, it's close to the first of the month, and we've got, you know, animals being left behind again that we're picking up. So, should anything come up that you find a lost animal, please try to secure it, keep it in your, your garage if possible, or find a neighbor or someone that you know that can hold the animal, because in, in cases like this, not only do we have people that move and leave them behind, we just have lost dogs and cats and other animals as well. So, if, if anyone needs anything, you know, those of you that have my number, feel free to, to contact me with that. Otherwise, if you can just keep them safe and secure, after all this is over, there are the lost pets pages on, on Facebook for this area that are really wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to take one minute before we close and, and say, we've done all, Commissioner, I mean, it's Commissioner, might as well say Commissioner Shang, manager Shang, has, has allowed our employees, the bulk of them, not everybody, but a, a good number of our employees to have the day off tomorrow to get prepared for this. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a joke, this is a serious one, and if you've got elderly neighbors, people that live alone, people that are handicapped, please take a minute or two out of your day tomorrow to stop by and see if they need anything. These people, for the most part, are isolated, they don't know where to turn to, and they really don't know who to call, what can I do? And they say, oh, we'll just tough it out. You know, I'm X number of years old, I've lived this long, I'm going to tough it out. But a friendly knock on the door during the day, not this evening, but during the day, so you don't spook them, and offer help, a simple thing like maybe picking up, you know, a six-pack of, of water for them, or, or make available. A lot of people in our community don't have city water, they have wells. They're going to be needing that, so make your neighbors aware, if you live in an area like where I do and similar other areas where you know neighbors are on well water and not city water, that, hey, you know, I'll run a hose out, just feel free to use it. We're only talking about 24, 48 hours, hopefully, of the real serious problems, and then the sun will be out, and we should be in good shape. Again, the need of water, if you're on the Deltona water system, there's always a possibility it would go out, but we are fully equipped, and the, those lines are underground, they're pretty well safe, so I wouldn't make that a top priority tomorrow. I'd move debris, lawn equipment, lawn chairs, things that you wouldn't think of, become a missile and a projectile, and they could injure not only yourself, your vehicles, your home, but your neighbor's property too. So, tomorrow's not the day to decide to take down an 80-foot tree, but tomorrow's the day to get everything else out of there and out of the way, and think about your neighbors when you're doing it too, okay? God bless everybody.
And thank you to all of our first responders and everybody that's out there working and keeping everybody safe. Let's keep them in our, in our prayers as well as everybody else.
I'll convey that to everybody tomorrow, and, but everybody out there be safe, and we're thinking of, and one last time, information, 386-878-8100, and they'll be able to get you the proper authorities of 911, if you have an individual emergency. Thank you all for being here tonight, and have a safe next few days. Bye.